Well, good evening and welcome to this December fourteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting. Just a reminder, the floor will be open to the audience for twenty minutes to address the City Council on matters that are on the agenda after the City Council has discussed these items with staff. We ask that persons wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length, and comments must be addressed to the City Council as a whole through the Mayor. And of course, profanity may not be used or will not be tolerated in any form. We do have three items on this evening's agenda. The first item is the ComEd Smart Grid. It's being presented to provide an introduction and parallel the initiatives that I plan on bringing forth in 2022 for 2023 and beyond. Before I introduce this evening's presenters, I'd like to repeat the background as written in the packet to lay the foundation here. ComEd Smart Grid is an electric system capable of complementing other digital technologies. Those technologies enhance quality of life, add convenience, reduce costs in some cases, detect problems in other cases, and allow end-users greater reliability. The Smart Grid enables better service and greater control over consumers' electricity consumption. Simply put, the Smart Grid technology incorporates the power of computers to the electrical grid. Adding computers allows smart switches to isolate problems within the electric system and automatically reroutes power so the electricity keeps flowing to as many people as possible. Smart meters notify ComEd when an outage occurs so technicians can be dispatched with greater immediacy and restore power sooner. The Smart Grid provides the customer access to valuable energy usage information. As the saying goes, information is power. Municipal decision-makers, like ourselves, should be aware of this information and the benefits a Smart Grid offers. This knowledge should translate to policies that usher progress, evolution, and value within the community they serve. The most obvious benefits are fewer and shorter power outages, the availability of tools and services that help save money, and a cleaner, greener planet for future generations. However, it should also be understood that the Smart Grid is not the solution. The Smart Grid is the foundation in which communities should layer infrastructure solutions upon. As a result of my involvement with the Illinois Smart City and Region Association, I've invited Dave Doherty from ComEd, Scott Smith from United Systems and Software, Inc., and Mark Bruss from Itron to present to us this evening an overview of the Smart Grid and further illustrate the potential the Smart Grid offers as we begin to enhance and evolve our infrastructure. So with that, gentlemen, if you'd like to come up to the podium and begin the presentation, we're happy to have you.
Thank you for having us here. We're very excited to be here. My name is Dave Doherty. I'm Director of AMI Operations and Engineering with ComEd. Wanted to talk about our program. So from 2014 to 2019, we installed over four million meters in northern Illinois. And we read those meters remotely over an RF mesh network that's very secure, it's compliant with all Internet protocols, and it provides a foundation that Joe talked about for the Smart Grid. ComEd, I don't know that we want to go through this whole slide, so I'll talk about the Smart Grid program. It's been very successful for ComEd. We read our meters. Prior to the deployment of Smart Grid, we were reading meters probably around eighty percent manually by meter readers going up and reading them old-fashioned way. We put in the microprocessors with radios at each home, and we're now reading meters at over ninety-nine point eight percent. Those meters form a network, it's called a mesh network, that passes information along very much like the Internet. It's designed really after the Internet. And so those devices can talk to other devices, like water meters, like streetlights, and other Internet of Things devices. And so that's what we're really excited to do with the completion of our Smart Grid deployment, really looking for other opportunities to where we can add value to our communities and really kind of lift up the northern Illinois communities and provide that as a service. Because it really doesn't, to us, make sense to have, you know, one network built on top of another. So we have the infrastructure in place, and it just makes sense that we would, as a community, use that same infrastructure. I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about Itron.
Not sure where I'm supposed to point this.
I think you can just point it anywhere and you shouldn't read it.
Okay, you're right. Sorry. Yeah, my name is Mark Bruss. I am the Regional Sales Manager for Itron. We are the technology provider that ComEd chose to deploy their Smart Grid network. And just a little bit about, we are a publicly traded company headquartered in Liberty Lake, Washington. I live in the Edwardsville, Illinois area here in the Midwest and support Scott Smith and United Systems, who are our distributor. You'll talk next. We are the largest supplier of these kind of automation systems in North America. Itron has been doing technology for municipalities, investor-owned utilities, cooperatives, for nearly thirty years. So a lot of credibility in this space and a lot of track record of deploying successful long-term solutions that are cost-effective and provide the benefit that utilities and communities have come to deserve. With that said, I'll just turn it over to Scott, and he'll talk a little bit about United Systems.
And United Systems is the distributor of Itron products for water in eighteen states. We're based out of Kentucky. That's where I'm located. I've been with United Systems for well over twenty years. We've been doing Itron since nineteen ninety-nine. We have a regional account manager in the area that lives in the Milwaukee area that actually would be working with you more closely. He couldn't make it tonight on short notice. But as a distributor, we have in-house technicians that come and train the software, integrate the software, train you on how this hardware works. And that's a little bit different from some of our competitors where they just send in the manufacturer. But we, hands-on, get very involved, and then support it over the life of the system. So, back to Mark.
So as Dave said, ComEd deployed this network, and the beauty of it, the infrastructure is already there. To take advantage of that, the Village of Rolling Brook would not need to basically put up anything. All you'd have to do is deploy your own radios on different types of devices. So the Smart Grid system that, you know, we call it a multi-application network, the applications that Commonwealth Edison is using is electric metering, distribution automation, and smart streetlights already. But there are a lot of others depicted in this slide that Rolling Meadows could take advantage of, things like, again, smart streetlights, pressure monitoring for your water system, smart parking, traffic monitoring. We've got a lot of different partnerships, we're doing a lot of different things that all those applications can run on this existing network. And with, again, with investment for Rolling Meadows would be to just put sensors on the specific applications. So a little bit of what we're, the primary application that we're delivering today with cities like Rolling Meadows is smart water metering. And I understand you guys have a system to read meters but are maybe looking at a new technology to, you know, to bring data more readily and more often for your consumers to look at. So the way we're doing that with Commonwealth Edison is taking the existing network that they've got, all we basically have to do is put a radio on your existing water meters, hook that in, and it communicates automatically through the mesh network that Dave mentioned earlier. We securely separate that data so that data for Rolling Meadows is completely isolated from the metering data that Commonwealth Edison uses for their customers. But we make that available to you on a simple web application that provides hourly interval data for water usage so that both the city personnel as well as your consumers have access to that data to look at, you know, when you might have a leak, kind of when your usage is higher than normal, your usage this year versus last year. You know, if it's a dry period, maybe you're watering more, and you can see that usage and really pinpoint where the costs are coming from. But again, the beauty of it is, it's for the city, is just to deploy a radio. Now, Scott will talk a little bit about, more about that specific technology and what the, you know, the parts and pieces of it are. But the simplicity of it here is, all you have to do is put that piece of radio hardware on there. And what those look like is just a, just a box like that, hooks your existing water So what we have, what we did, we took the infrastructure that Commonwealth Edison already has here in Rolling Meadows and plotted that on a map. So the blue dots that you're seeing on this map are the existing electric meters. And the way this technology works is those radios that you deploy on your water devices would automatically communicate through those existing Commonwealth electric meters. No infrastructure, no two towers or five towers you'd have to put up on a pole or a tower here in town. You just, the water radios find the nearest and most accessible path through the ComEd meter, electric meter network. So, you know, what we'd like to say is that instead of having three or four towers or two towers to communicate through for an AMI network, you have seven thousand electric meters that you can communicate through. And that's really kind of simplifying it because the areas around Rolling Meadows also have electric meters that we could communicate through. It's not limited to the ones that are on your premises. So what that does is just gives them amazingly efficient use of the existing infrastructure. So we could also plot, you know, your water devices, we haven't got that data from you yet, but we can plot those against the same electric meters and just, you know, kind of confirm that where you have water meters, there's existing electric meters to have them communicate through. So we'd love to have that opportunity to do that for you. Any questions on kind of what, how the system works?
So I think the primary benefit to take away from this is that there is an existing infrastructure when it comes to network technologies. And for communities like ours, it would not make sense to try and duplicate an existing network. We should not build redundant networks. We should utilize secure networks that already exist. When it comes to the value of connecting things like water meters or our gas meters, water meters, we have a lot of residents on fixed incomes, and their ability to watch real-time their consumption or set up alerts in real time and not after the fact will help them with their financial constraints that they might have. Other applications for safety and security, when it comes to gas meter connections, we would have the ability to remotely disconnect or shut off gas in case of fire. This would be valuable for our first responders going to a fire, for example, if it's a multi-story fire, and these meters are connected with these radio network connectivity, we'd be able to shut those off in advance to secure the property before even arriving on site.
Thank you. So Scott will go into a little bit more of the parts and pieces.
So as Mark mentioned, this is the radio device that would go on to the home or in the basement, either one. And it can be added to your existing water meter, or you can, you know, add a new water meter, and it's compatible with various brands. It is full two-way signal, so you can request a reading directly from it. There are separate items like shut-off valves that can be connected to the system as well for water and for gas, as you mentioned. It has a ten-year full warranty and expected battery life of twenty years. And then, moving on to...
Should I go on both?
Yep. As far as the meter compatibility goes, the radios will work with every major brand of water meter on the market, and I believe you might use Census meters now. It is, you know, fully compatible with those. And then, there's three meter companies that are sharing advanced alarms with the radio, and that's the ones in red here. That's Deal, Camstrip, and Badger if it has an HRE LCD. Unfortunately, Census is not sharing their extra alarms with Itron because they have their own system that they want you to buy instead. But Deal is a meter that we can offer through Itron. Looks like this. So it's an ultrasonic static smart meter, similar to the Ipro, except for this uses ultrasonics instead of magnetics, excuse me. And this has a metallic body, where some of the other vendors are making, you know, plastic or composite bodies. This is a German company, but they actually have set up a headquarters in Naperville, and they are starting to manufacture these actually in Lisle. So that's an offering that we can supply through Itron as well. And it adds, all of those offer the advanced alarms at the bottom, which would be low temperature, so if it's getting close to freezing, it could send out an alarm to the city staff that, you know, this particular home is getting ready to, you know, have a freeze incident and cause water damage. Low battery, empty pipe, which is an indication of, you know, theft usually, and leak detected. So if there's a continuous small leak, it will pick that up and let you know. And then there's also a burst where if a pipe were to break at a certain threshold of usage for a period of time, it's going to send out a message to notify you that, you know, the pipe is broken. And instead of finding that, you know, a few weeks later or whatever, if the resident was gone, you would actually get that notification within, you know, the hour. Talk about the head-end software a little bit. So, of course, ComEd has their own software. Each, you know, city would have their own version of that same software, similar software. And it allows you, on a high-end level right here, to see, you know, what's reading, which is the green items, you know, what might be suspicious for tampering or whatever in the yellow. And then if there were no communications, that would be showing up in red. And then you basically can zoom in to, you know, various maps, and you can see green is reading just fine, yellow might have something wrong again, red could be potentially an issue. And I keep remembering to do that. There's that one. And then this one, you can increase, you know, customer satisfaction by, with this system, you would have hourly usage patterns for each customer. Right now, you're probably reading monthly or bimonthly or possibly even quarterly. With this, you would have hourly information come in, and so you could, you know, see their consumption patterns down to the hour. And in this case, here's an example of somebody that, you know, had a high-usage event where they had normal usage and then it went higher. And, you know, the customer can actually log in and see this as well through their own customer portal. They just have to create an account, and then they, within that portal, they can set up parameters as well where if, in this particular example, one gallon per hour usage every hour continuously for eighteen hours, it's going to send an alarm to them themselves saying that, hey, you've got continuous usage and potentially a leak or whatever the case may be. And that's user configurable per, you know, customer, whatever parameters they want to put in there. And the Village of South Elgin is using this system with the ComEd network, and, you know, they are very excited to be moving forward and offering this technology to their customers. Kind of wrap things up, you know, basically it's no network investment where you have to buy your own network, you know, duplication. You don't have to maintain your own network because ComEd's maintaining it for their purposes to read a ninety-nine point eight percent of their meters for billing purposes. So you have minimal investment and maintenance of IT items. It's very secure. Basically, it uses bank-level security encryption on the data to keep everything safe. Where if you buy a water-only network, a lot of times they're not that secure. This is more robust because of all the components that come into the network. And it's basically the best-in-class offering for IoT devices now and down the road. You know, this is an investment you're looking at for the next fifteen years or so, and devices that we don't even know about will be available five years from now. That's an open system where we can bring on additional devices. And overall, it has a one-time, you know, deployment fee for setup and software integration. And then there's a monthly fee per service for the software and for the network connectivity. And then the radio endpoints are very competitive priced compared to, you know, existing radio networks that people are using. We would just need more information about your meter locations, quantities, and things like that to put together a proposal. And that is a quick overview. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything? If you have any questions.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I know that numerous communities are utilizing or taking advantage of ComEd Smart Grid. Most recently, South Elgin adopted the grid for their conventional water meters and augmenting those for network usage and for reliability when it comes to the network architecture and the secure aspects of that. The reason that I wanted to bring this forward was purely for presentation only at this time. But I thought it was useful and opportune. As we look at our objectives, we should continue to do so holistically instead of historically where we look at an issue with a target objective of fixing whatever we're pursuing, but rather look at the solution and see how the solution that we go to pursue will have side value or advantages for other aspects of our city and how those can translate to other benefits that translate directly to the consumer, community resident, as well as our budget and our operational efficiencies. Alderman Bessetti?
One really quick question. I'll keep it high level. Did you say the meters would just go outside next to, by the current?
Your current water meter, I'm assuming in most cases, is probably inside the home in a basement environment. The radio device would be wired to that existing meter if you're going to keep your meters. And then this could be inside the home or outside the home. It doesn't matter because it doesn't have to travel very far with the, this system, this just has to make it to the nearest electric meter. With a, you know, traditional network, you'll have two or three collectors throughout the city, and this device might have to travel a mile or, you know, further. Where with this, all it has to do is make it fifty feet or whatever it is to the closest electric meter. So it could be mounted in.
I just wanted to know that if, you know, once you had all your information and all that, and were able to give any kind of a proposal, should we ask for it, you know, would, you know, residents need to be scheduling appointments for people to come in and stuff like that?
That depends on two things. One is how old is the existing water meter that's in that home? If it's relatively new, then it's probably fairly accurate still, but over time, water meters will be, get less accurate, so you might only be billing for eighty percent of the water. So while you're doing this system, if the meters are old, it's usually a good idea to replace them with new meters that are going to be more accurate. And this also assumes that the meters are inside the home. They would need access to that meter to, you know, change the existing radio. There's a chance your existing radios are on the outside of the home and wired out. And if that's the case, if you wanted to keep the meter that you have, all you'd have to do on the outside is take off the existing radio, put this in its place, then you wouldn't have to access the home. But depending on that variable, whether the meter's inside and the existing radio's inside, or if the meter's old and needs to be replaced anyway, then you would have to schedule an appointment, you know, with that homeowner to make that meter change and then access to install a new radio.
Okay. And then there would be no cost to the actual homeowner for that?
Generally, the most communities don't. They, you know, cover the cost of these devices through their own funding. They don't charge the actual customer anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bessetti?
Do any of the meters measure the water pressure?
There are separate devices that could be added for pressure. The meter itself does not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman McHale?
Out of curiosity, and I know that it probably will change, but on average, what is, how much do, does one of those devices cost?
It's going to vary based on the quantity that you're purchasing and things, but with the hardware for just the radio, I'll ballpark it at a hundred dollars.
Okay.
You know, give or take.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Bessetti?
One last one. Multi-family dwellings, do they need separates?
Yeah.
Radios for, say, each apartment?
That also depends on the construction and way it's set up.
The way they set up their electric?
Yeah. Some multi-tenants will have actually just one water meter that feeds the whole thing. In that case, it would take one radio. But if the, each apartment is metered on a water meter by itself and they're in a meter room or whatever where you've got twelve meters, then you would have twelve individual radios that tie to each person. But some utility or some apartment buildings just have one meter that feeds the whole building.
Okay.
And then they don't actually pay water, you know, per apartment. It's just kind of built into it.
One for each meter, then?
Yes.
Okay.
One per meter.
Thank you, Alderman Bessetti. Doesn't look like there's any other questions. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Well, concluding the information about the ComEd Smart Grid, we'll move on to the second item, which is the Water Ambassador Program and the Drinking Water One, Two, Three. And for this, Mr. Rivard, the floor is yours when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Gallo and council. There we go. Tonight, I'm here to present on Water One, Two, Three: A Guide to Local Officials and Community Leaders. The Illinois Section of American Water Works Association, or ISAWWA, developed a program for public and private water utility companies alike to elevate public knowledge, perception, education with the water industry. This program aims to accomplish these goals by presenting a new communication platform This program aims to accomplish these goals by presenting a new communication platform of educational and promotional content in a manner that is relevant, engaging, consistent among all participants. Participating members such as Rolling Meadows utilize social media, website postings, and newsletters to communicate these efforts to our residents and businesses. Communities that complete a variety of outreach initiatives can become accredited and/or certified as a Water Ambassador. These initiatives include educating elected officials, providing consumers with information about the value of water, industry understanding, and industry-related events. Each accredited Water Ambassador receives a recognition sign that can be posted at the entrance of their community, similar to Tree City USA recognition sign. In following years, participants will receive a sticker logo to add to the sign to indicate the number of years consecutively ran. ISAWWA's program currently recognizes a bronze, silver, and gold level of completion. By making this Drinking Water 123, A Guide to Local Officials and Community Leaders presentation to the mayor and city council, the city is in a position to complete the necessary requirements to receive the gold level recognition, which is the highest level of achievement. A quick overview of the guide will be discussed in tonight's meeting. Council's been provided a hard copy of the guide, which I will share some important information and details in a short PowerPoint presentation. Sorry, it's a little hard to read there. Meet Your Water: An Introduction. People in the northeastern part of Illinois may ask, where does our water come from? We receive water from surface water such as Lake Michigan, the Fox and Kankakee Rivers. We also receive water through groundwater via aquifers and wells. Sources of Water and Treatment. Here in Rolling Meadows, we receive our water from the Jardine Water Purification Plant in Chicago. From there, it is treated and delivered to the city through the Northwest Joint Action Water Agency, or Northwest Jawa. The Jardine Water Plant is located right next to Navy Pier in Chicago where they pull the water from an inlet called the crib a mile from shore. A little fun fact here for tonight, the largest water treatment plant in the world is actually right here in Illinois, the James W. Jardine Water Purification Plant in Chicago. Between this plant and the Eugene Sawyer Plant on the south side, Chicago can process almost 1 billion, yes, with a B, billion gallons of water a day for our region. Infrastructure. Delivering Water to the Tap. Utilizing existing infrastructure, we're able to deliver water from the source all the way to our homes and businesses. The water is collected from the water source and is extensively filtered and treated by technicians to verify that EPA standards are met. The water is then delivered through large underground mains to their desired location. The water is either then utilized and consumed, stored in elevated tanks or water tanks for peak times when the water is needed as well as increased water pressure. Every time you turn on the faucet, we all expect clean, safe water. Creating potable water isn't easy. Technically trained, or technically trained operators and engineers carefully track and monitor the treatment process to ensure that our communities enjoy high-quality, safe drinking water. Your Water Keeper. Water Utility Regulators. For public water systems, that, local officials must account for everything from ensuring enough supply of water, or enough supply to water quality monitoring and treatment, service operations and infrastructure maintenance, and ensuring regulatory compliance. In the United States, there are over 151,000 public water systems in operation. Most public water systems are owned by municipalities, they serve, or regional consortium of communities such as a water commission. Federal Regulation. The federal regulation, such as the Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974, was enacted by Congress to ensure water systems in the U.S. were providing good, quality water to consumers. The Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, or EPA, established minimum standards which all owners and operators must be in compliance. The United States Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, is the federal regulator on safe drinking water for all communities. The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, IEPa, is the state enforcement agency for drinking water standards. The Illinois Department of Health, IDPH, creates and regulates standards and provides oversight on non-community water systems such as standalone business or institutions on their own well. Illinois Commerce Commission, ICC, governs over a small percentage of communities of providing drinking water from privately-owned utility companies. These utility companies need an extra layer of oversight. The ICC oversees rate setting and mergers between utility companies. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, also plays a role. Illinois has a limit for the amount of water it can withdraw from Lake Michigan. These quantities were set by the Supreme Court decree. The IDNR keeps track of domestic water supply, direct diversion, and stormwater runoff. Everyone who receives water from Lake Michigan must have a permit from the IDNR. Each permitted agency must submit a monthly form to show daily water usage and the amount sold to other utilities and/or municipalities. IDNR also regulates surface water withdrawal from the Fox and Kankakee Rivers. This allows them to protect these water sources from overuse. The Illinois State Water Survey, ISWS, is responsible for the Illinois Water Inventory Program. This program maintains and compiles records on annual water withdrawals and water use information. This information helps regions understand current water demand and available supply. Reporting to the ISWS is mandatory for public water suppliers as well as industries that withdraw and use water. This also includes all irrigation users. Sorry, that was a mouthful. Merky Waters: The Challenges We Face. There are many challenges we face in the water industry, such as pollution, aging infrastructure, replacement programs, drought, flooding, algae blooms, salt, and we, and making sure that we have enough water in our aquifers, just to name a few. Supply Constraints. The deep sandstone aquifers are being depleted and are no longer sustainable. This means that high-capacity wells could be unusable as little as 15 years, with many more wells in the Midwest becoming dry by 2050. This is concerning to us as we have four wells within the city that act as a secondary or tertiary means of access to water for residents and businesses in emergency situations. Pollution. Toxins that threaten Illinois water supply. Some of the toxins that threaten our water supply are fertilizers from lawns and agriculture, organic materials such as human wastes, and inorganic materials such as pharmaceuticals. Both can impact groundwater due to sanitary sewer overflow or leaking septic systems. Industrial toxins and chemicals either being spilled or leached into the ground, chlorides from salting our roads and sidewalks, as well as water softeners can negatively impact our water sources. Aging or Crumbling Infrastructure. The water infrastructure within Rolling Meadows has many obstacles that include the age and type of material as well, as well as the amount of breaks that occur within a segment of pipe. The map on the slide, I know it's a little small to see from here, but the map on the slide indicates, in green, cast iron that was put in pre-1960 with a 50-year lifespan that needs to be replaced. Cast iron currently accounts for 16% of the water main within the city. We also have 26% of transite pipe that has a 50-to-70-year lifespan, and 52% ductile iron pipe that can be between 20- to 100-year lifespan, usually average about 50. This means we're working with a large amount of utilities that are past their lifespan. The red lines in the picture show each segment where there's more than one break on a segment of water main. Each break causes stress on the pipe and will consequently begin deteriorating quicker in time. Through the city of Rolling Meadows, or though the city of Rolling Meadows does an excellent job at repairing our infrastructure, planning for water main replacement is essential for a sustainable future. These images depict issues we face every day with our aging infrastructure. We face water main breaks of all types and sizes, tuberculosis, which is mineral deposits on the wall of the water main that can reduce flow of the water through that section of Fragmented Systems. Communities that use Lake Michigan water must report all usage and infrastructure conditions. The rest of the region, particularly those communities facing water shortages, are not held to the same standards. Because of these differences, our region is extremely fragmented in our approach to managing a shared vital resource. The action of one community can impact another, which is why there are now more coordinated regional water supply planning efforts. Climate Change. Latest climate models predict that Illinois temperatures will increase on average to 2.1 to 3 degrees Fahrenheit by the year 2035. Predictions also call for a rainier, wetter springs and drier, hotter summers. With the influx of spring rains, there'll be increase in, an increase in flooding, which the overload of wastewater treatment facilities and spillways into our waterways. The dry summers will deplete the water aquifers and reservoirs as well as surface waters. This will greatly impact our available water resources in the future. The decreased water levels and higher temperatures also produce large algae blooms that reduce water quality and make treatment more expensive. This can also affect the local ecosystem, which impacts aquatic life that turn, that in turn can affect the health of the water source. In Rolling Meadows, we utilize four deep wells as our backup water supply. Developing and continuously revising and adapting and collaborative approach to water supply planning and management is imperative to dealing with these effects of climate change. Addressing and planning for these impacts is important to help mitigate the future supply constraints and increase costs for treatment. What can we do? We can plan for the sustainable future of the water utilities for the residents and businesses within Rolling Meadows. This includes water modeling, yearly water main replacement, leak detection, and advanced mapping for these needed areas. We can create an annual replacement program that invests in critical water infrastructure that spreads out the cost over time. The city can continue to maintain key water infrastructure such as pumping stations, wells, elevated tanks, and interconnects to the city. Public works can also look into reducing water quality impacts, or reducing water quality impacts on our water supply. We will continue to educate the public and elected officials on these issues and work together to improve our communities. This is a presentation intended to educate the city council and public on the basics of a water system, or our water system. Staff is not seeking any direction at this time, but available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for the presentation. I think we're all on board with Water Train.
My apologies.
Any questions? Alderman Bessessi?
Just one thing. Both this presentation and the last one, can we get it added somewhere into the packets or residents if they want to see it? Can...
Absolutely.
See it?
There shouldn't be a problem with the first one either? We can have that for you? Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate you taking the time to provide us with this information. It's very important. We understand where our water comes from, how much water is pumped to communities, right? We, you know, I had the fortune of going to the Northwest Municipal Jawa facility near O'Hare, and they pump some 30 million gallons a day. And for me, I typically go to the sink, turn on the water, turn it off, and don't think twice about the water. And so it's important that we do consider the infrastructure, its aging, and how we can be more sustainable for our future. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to the third item here, which is the proposed Holodome redevelopment. And for this, we'll begin with Joellen, and then you can take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I'd come up here since everybody else did. And I'm not going to talk about water. But it's good to see everybody tonight. Switching gears a little bit, we wanted to come before you tonight to talk about a proposed redevelopment of the Holodome property at 3447 Algonquin Road. I think everybody knows where it is. It's on the south side of Algonquin Road, just east of Route 53. We're here to request an informal feedback. We've been talking to the developer about their request to modify not only the long-range plan or the comprehensive plan, but also the zoning. And so we've worked with them a little bit to tell them what we think would be important to make that kind of change. But before, we're kind of at that point now, before we spend a lot more time and ask them to prepare a lot of plans and documents and studies that we would need to have to go through the public hearing process, we wanted to get some informal feedback from you because they don't want to and we don't want to spend a lot of time on all of that if there's some big roadblock coming from, from the council. So really, the only way to do that is to give you a little history, talk to you a little bit about what we presented to them in terms of what we thought was important, show you a little bit about where they're at. We've actually gone through a couple of iterations of the plan so far based on the comments that we've had. And in fact, this report they got on Friday, and they already gave me copies of some revisions that they made based on these comments. So that's how quickly these things can, can move forward. So the history, let's start there. Back in 2017, a special use was authorized for the developer. I'm actually going to go to the site plan. You guys need a bigger monitor up here. But I wanted to start with this slide because it shows the overall site plan and the, the big area in the middle. There is no pointer here. Whoops. So the big square in the upper-left part of that drawing is the location where the existing Holodome building is. So it's the Holodome, some of the two-story hotel rooms around the Holodome are in that location. To the right of that big building is the A Loft, so you can get an idea of the scale of the A Loft, which, I mean, when you drive by it, you think it's big, but it looks really small in this picture. And then to the south is the Holiday Inn Express Building. All three of those buildings are commonly owned by the same owner on a property that has been, has been granted some of these approvals in the past. That special use that was granted for assisted living back in 2017, I think they worked on that for a little while, but they're telling us now that there is very little market for that. And that's pretty consistent with some of what we've been hearing. The things that are hot in the market right now are not commercial, they're not office. It's mostly residential or large-scale warehouse industrial buildings as, as we've been seeing in the news. So they are interested in the city's opinion about a mixed-use project, which would include both commercial and apartment, residential, multifamily residential units. The site plan that they have generally covers the same area as the Holodome. I do want to talk a little bit about how their plan has evolved based on some of the feedback that we provided them preliminarily. That's on page two of your staff report, but I'll step through that just so we can kind of all be working from the same page. Also, you know, we kind of hope that you'll share this with your constituents because even as we go through this process, we'd like to hear feedback from them so that we can get to, to a project if we decide to move forward that works for everybody. But basically, some of the main points in going from commercial to residential is we want to make a little bit more green space available for the residents who would be there. People, you know, coming to a commercial building to stay in a hotel, come in their car or leave in their car. If you're coming home at night, you might want to go outside and throw a football, take your dog out for a walk. You don't really want to be in a parking lot to do those things. You need to have access to sidewalks and other residential amenities. So we did talk to them about adding sidewalks and making connections to those sidewalks within the development, and also adding a sidewalk along Toll View to provide better connections to the sidewalks that already exist on Algonquin. We do, or we did provide some feedback that they consider, I'm going to go back. So to the right is Toll View Drive of that picture. The parking lot that you see on the right with the angled parking is not owned by the subject property. It's owned by the office property to the south. There's 100 parking spaces in that lot, and currently, the hotel has arrangements to share that parking. It's not perpetual, so someday that parking could go away and we need to be aware of that. We had suggested that they work with that property owner to try and create a straight west-to-east access across the back of the property. You can see that if you're going around the south side of that property and you have to come north and then get back out to Toll View, that's a pretty tough movement for some of our emergency vehicles. We did ask that they pursue conversations with the property owners to the west. So one of the unique aspects of this development is it has no direct access to a signal, a signalized intersection on Algonquin. The Crossroads of Commerce Signal is to the west in front of that property, and then to the east is, is the other signal. So it's possible IDOT could require or permit a signal to be located on Toll View, but they're very close and we know that IDOT oftentimes will ask them to consolidate existing signals. So that is something that we also worked with them on, and they would be willing to pursue or investigate further. That's going to be something that, again, they're looking for this feedback because once they kind of open that door, there's a lot of things involved that they would need to have a little bit of assurance from the city that they're going to be able to move forward. Talked about the parking height. Our current zoning ordinance has... Our current zoning ordinance has a restriction for residential uses at five stories. So every residential building, or most residential buildings you see in Rowling Meadows are limited to five stories in height. They are proposing five stories, but that's on top of two stories of a mix of commercial on the first floor. So that frontage that you see along Algonquin, in this proposal, has commercial frontage on the first floor. The second floor is five individual residential units, and then behind those two floors is structure parking. So I think they have several hundred parking spaces to the south of those uses. So the five stories of residential is actually above that on floors three through seven. We asked them to recess balconies and decks so they are flush with the units instead of extending out over. It's a design feature that tends to work better on higher-level, multiple-family buildings. So we asked them to do that. That's incorporated into the plan. Some of their earlier plans had some smaller units, so we asked them to avoid very small units and hopefully work to give us something that would provide live-work alternatives for our residents based in this current economy. We also asked them to determine whether they could accommodate at least one outlot commercial development. So one of the things going from commercial to residential that we want to make sure we investigate or ensure is to put something there that's going to hopefully make the hotel uses successful. Residential uses can be compatible with, but it would work a lot better if there was a restaurant there that the two hotel uses could also capitalize on. So that's something that I know they're looking at and investigating. In fact, the revised plans that they gave me today, I was talking to Thomas Al, who's in the back room, and he said that's something that they might be interested in continuing to investigate. We also have overhead utilities on the property on both the west and north, so along Algonquin and along the west property line between this building and Crossroads of Commerce to the west. They obviously will need to accommodate stormwater requirements on-site, and that's tough when you have a lot-of-lot coverage on the property. And then we had some water service issues that exist from when the development was one big project, so we're asking that those be separated so that in the event that these parcels are separated in the future, they can operate on their own and not have to rely on going through other buildings. So I'm giving you a lot of detail, but it's not our intent that you really give us a thumbs up on this particular plan. We would fully expect that things that are moving forward might change in response to the feedback that you're going to provide us. So I think, you know, we outlined some deal-breaker kinds of comments that I real quickly want to go through, just to kind of get your feedback on, and I think anything that you can address for us will be helpful. That commercial outlot, again, we've gone back and forth a little bit, but having some feedback from you on would be useful. Parking, one of the staff comments is that we really want to make sure that this project stands on its own, so that shared parking of the 100 spaces with the office building to not, to make sure that they don't include that in their count, and some of their earlier plans had done that. The height is also something that we're interested in. We're, staff level, at the staff level, we're kind of divided. There's some people that think that maintaining the height that's been in our code for a long time and that most of our buildings have is worthwhile to continue and keep that consistency. In other instances, we know development costs are rising, and that it's more challenging for developers to provide us with suitable alternatives. So height, increasing a couple of stories above that five levels, as long as everything else can be accommodated, is something we'd be interested in getting feedback from you on. The access to and from Algonquin, I think that's going to be a tough project for them to overcome. So going to the west and making the connection to Crossroads of Commerce will require them to come up to agreement with the private property owner on cross-access and, you know, paying them and having a lot of construction that's not on their property that may or may not be beneficial to that owner. They can take their time, you know, there's a lot of things that could slow that down. So we understand that that's hard, but it is important. There's a lot of curb cuts on this project now, and we really want to make sure that traffic can get in and out of there effectively without backing up into the industrial park or into the residential areas. We did provide them with some unit layout and amenities were provided. So we're hopeful that they can continue to focus on mostly the two-bedroom units. The latest proposal that we had increased the number of one-bedroom units. One of the things that happens when we ask them to reduce the size of the footprint of the building to get more green space is they reduce the size of the units so that they can have the same number of units and meet the financials. So that's something that we're interested in understanding a little bit more. I think the revised plan also eliminated the, a lot of the dens or that live-work component that we had asked for, which I thought was really important. The other big thing that they're going to need to make sure they address is the stormwater. The original plans, and I included it in your report, but didn't have a slide to show you tonight, is that the parking lot that they're just now finishing for the A Loft is their proposed location for their underground stormwater detention. So they're planning to basically tear out all of the drive-aisles in the parking lot around the A Loft and then bury the underground detention in that location. That will obviously be an impact on the A Loft Hotel. They'll have to carefully phase that. I don't know if there's any alternatives to that, but that's something that we do have some concerns about. We did outline for you in the report the building coverage still being a little too high. They are still working on that and willing to come down a little bit, so I think that's something that we can continue to make better in the plan. On the last page of the report, I did outline some very specific questions that I thought we could ask the mayor to go through. But please keep in mind, you know, this is informal. We've not done this before. This is kind of a sample of what we could do on bigger projects like this to get this kind of feedback. I have discussed with the applicants that anything that you provide them informally, that once it goes through a public hearing process, you could have 50 or 100 people show up and say, "What were you thinking? You know, this is not something we want." And that's, we can't predict that at this point. This isn't something that we did public notices on. We don't know what the public will do once this is noticed and it's out there. So with that in mind, try to look at the questions with that first question being kind of the most important one as to whether it is something that you want to see us continue to pursue with them, and then if so, kind of move on to question number two. So Mayor, do you want to kind of do that straw poll?
Yeah, I think it's important to talk about that.
Sure, or answer any questions.
Yeah, before we get to these, we'll go to the questions. I had a couple of questions as you were providing the information. The first one about the residential aspect, did you mention in the report, or is it mentioned, how many units are potentially proposed?
Yes, I think there's 174 in the proposal that you saw, the one that they provided to me tonight, and they provided me with printed handouts, if you want to take one with you, but it increased by about 20 units. Again, once we asked them to provide us more green space, the units became smaller and they created less two-bedrooms, more one-bedrooms, and so the unit count went up. So now we need to look at parking that goes along with it. So everything kind of has a relationship with a lot of the other requirements.
Yeah, there's a lot of interdependencies. As far as the amount of stories, in that particular area, there are corporate buildings, and those corporate buildings, I believe, are 10 or 14 stories.
A lot of 10, yeah.
And so I know it wouldn't look out of place to have a building of that scale there. My question would be from a safety and security aspect to Chief Moxley and our ladder truck and the sufficiency that we have in the event that we had to respond to any emergencies or fires. Chief, how do we look from a first responder perspective at a building of that size?
Did it, yeah, sorry. Didn't know if it was on. We're good. We're 107 feet. We can reach that, depending on how far, what our access would be. But yeah, we should be fine.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as, you know, the library drive over here where those condominiums are, I don't know the number of units in that particular set of condos, but I do know that they do not have traffic intersection access, direct traffic intersection access. And I don't know if we can use this as a baseline indicator to determine what sort of issues we'll see as a result of not having a traffic light in the immediate future, or maybe when we get closer to public hearings, if we ask the residents their experience and how they feel in order to get some interdependencies on what new residents might feel in this new project development, should it occur. From the council's perspective, I'll open the floor for you, and then I have a couple other questions, but they might be answered. Alderman Bessisi?
Yeah. I was actually chairman of the planning commission when this came through, the first time we spent a lot of time on it, particularly the water retention and the parking. The parking was a compromise, so I'm going to vote down everything, regardless of what they do, period, if they do not have their own parking. I do not want a shared agreement. I don't want anything like that at all. The shared agreement can be taken away at any time. There's time restrictions. There's various different things. The other thing, the water was, I mean, they came up with some very clever ways of, I guess is the nicest way of saying it, of being able to deal with the water.
Stormwater?
Yeah, so I don't, you know, good luck if you're trying to find another way, but that'll be interesting to see. And then lastly, I have no problem with them going up to get their number of residents that they, or occupancies, or whatever you want to call it. The main thing is they need to stay in line with parking to make that happen. Oh, and lastly, an outlot, I would think that there needs to be a restaurant in either, in either one of the hotels. It doesn't necessarily have to be an outlot. Open for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Alderman Sinocca?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I understand that we spend a lot of time planning and putting together the comprehensive plan for the city, and those plans are to help direct the city and to help our decisions when it comes to projects like this. And so I would, I would want to note that if we're changing the zoning for this space, there must have been a specific reason to keep this zoning non-residential. Is there anything that we'd be giving up as a result of this that was the first intention of our planning?
So the process for our current comprehensive plan, which labels this as it was intended to be with the senior assisted living, I think that project was in place at the time the comprehensive plan was contemplated, so they treated it more like an existing use, even though it was a proposed use at the time. So I don't know that they evaluated, you know, they didn't really look at the economics of changing from a commercial use to a residential use, for example. Obviously, one of the things that happens with a project like this in this market is there is no market for commercial or office. So we're faced with the reality that if a project like this doesn't come through now or within the next probably five-ish years, there's a good chance the property would remain vacant and have a lot of code enforcement problems. So, you know, better to have something there and help the existing properties be marketable. Residential properties do bring in a significant amount of EAV that then helps lower the tax burden for the other residents. The prior use as a senior living facility or assisted living facility wasn't bringing us commercial tax dollars or retail tax dollars, so as a comparison, it's a good question. It's certainly something that we can ask them to provide us with an economic analysis of this change. It's a good point.
Thank you. And it sounds like there is a significant number of barriers, even from staff's perspective, for this project. Were there any other considerations since the writing of this for our packet that staff has considered or that they would like to mention at this point?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Budnitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because it's already moved from a commercial property to a assisted living property, and now we're looking at apartments, I mean, if the apartment market became soft and it made more sense for this to move to a condominium development, would the code restrictions be similar or more stringent for a condominium? Just curious, so that in the event that would happen, is that something we prepare for now, or we just look at it as what's being presented to us? Or what are the differences between those two?
So that's a good question. I think it's probably prudent to look at through the approval process the types of improvements that would help that conversion occur if the market softened, as you indicated. From a design perspective, they are incorporating or plan to incorporate the type of amenities that a condominium would usually have, you know, the party rooms, the weight rooms, the common elements that would be there. But we might need to incorporate language into the special use approval that would add conditions that if, at such a point in the future this changes, here are the things that would need to happen. So the covenants, the type of documents that would regulate how that would happen, or what they'd need to go through to make that change. It probably still would require at least a minor change to the special use, but it is something we can plan for.
Second question about the number of stories. I don't know how our current code defines the number of stories. So is it defined as a seven-story building based on our current code, and we're just being clever to get around that? Or is it really a five-story building with two floors of parking underneath?
It's a good question. I didn't look at that specifically. My assumption going into this is our code would define it as a seven-story building, even though there's only five stories of residential, because height also comes into play in that five-story calculation. I think it's 55 feet or five stories. If that became something that was non-compliant with the code, you know, it's either going to be another special use or a planned development. We haven't really gotten as far as figuring out the best mechanism to package this. You know, is it a planned, straight zoning with variations or a planned development that includes exceptions to the code? So those are things that we can add as the plan gets finalized.
Third question, what's happening with the roof? Is it going to be used as a roof? Is it going to be a green space? Is it going to be for people to, for residents to be able to utilize? So what's that plan look like?
The roof's kind of cool. I like the roof. Let me get to a picture. So this is the third floor. So you can see the U-shaped apartments around the grid in the middle. So that grid in the middle on the third floor is the ceiling of the second-floor garage structure, and it becomes a, an outdoor planted garden. So people that have, whose patios open up to that would walk out into grass, and everybody above that would be able to look down into grass. I provided an example of a condo building in another town that utilized this concept. Their U isn't as deep as the one that's proposed, but you can see that that structure has the garden over the first floor of a parking facility, and it's a park. I mean, you know, they have full-grown trees on there. There's a building that you can see kind of right in the middle above the parking. They put there to provide space to store the equipment that maintains that area. You know, You know, how it's used would be regulated either by, you know, we could have some say in that if we needed to, wanted to, thought it was useful. But typically, you just leave that to the association, and they'll put some restrictions on there that keep the peace and keep people happy. And I think it's a, it's a nice amenity. It's a, it's a good way. One of the things that we told them is minimize the impact on Algonquin because we have single family residents across the street. So this was their answer to that, is they, they put the U-shaped building there. The thing that was not, originally their U was the other way, so that that garden opened up with a southern exposure. But then you have 77 times five, you have 35 people looking down over the homes across the street. So that was something that we commented on. They flipped it around and has a little bit less of an impact, and we can go from there. But that's a, that is a nice feature.
And then what would happen with the roof of the U shape?
At the top, on the top floor?
On the top floor. I'm just curious because then to me, if it's usable space, it's basically another floor.
Yeah. I don't know if they, they didn't present any plans for what to do at the top of the seventh floor.
Good.
So, no, no common use that I know of planned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Budnitz? Alderman, McHale?
Yes, I just wanted to, just a comment. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention now in a committee of the whole so that we have the opportunity to take this to our residents and discuss this, as this is a large development and we are changing the zoning recommendation for that as opposed to getting it, you know, and running with it and having a whole room full of people who are not exactly thrilled about this plan. So I appreciate that and thank you for this presentation tonight. Sir?
Alderman, Sanoka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to piggyback off of those comments, I have not had any residents reach out about this particular item on the committee of the whole. I'm certain that with the holidays coming up, no one's necessarily checking the agenda at this point, but I'm certain that as soon as it becomes larger, or if it were to continue, that it would be. One thing that residents have approached me about regarding the current developments over on Kirchhoff and Meadow were, or was the topic of affordable housing and whether or not any of these units would, would qualify for any of those programs that would benefit the city or be at no cost to the city. So I don't, I doubt that that topic has come up with this, with this developer, but that was something that residents are concerned about overall. And when I say concerned, they, they are in favor of making sure that Raleigh Meadows has an affordable housing policy, which I don't believe we do at this point.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, Ceci?
Yeah. One other concern that I know for a fact, a lot of the residents that back up along Algonquin Road have brought up in the past on various things is lights, is how much light is going to be emitted from this property to light up their backyards and go into their bedrooms.
Okay.
There's been residents who have come to meetings, at least of the planning and zoning from that area regarding, yeah, regarding that. So that is something that needs to at least be looked at. I think the U shape being that way, the way that you spun it around will help a lot towards that, but that's just a concern that might be out there.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Thank you, Alderman. Ceci, any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. Then if not, I believe it'd be time to go through this list of questions. I, I do believe that this is a much-needed development. I think it does require careful consideration and working in a strong partnership with the developer and the property owner to make sure that we get everything aligned so that there's satisfaction to residents surrounding the area, but also helping the community evolve. As I said during the time, we augmented our other zoning to allow for tattoo parlors in certain areas. I think we do need to have a level of flexibility when we're exploring our current laid-out zoning to accommodate for future needs that we may not have foreseen in the immediate future, but also making sure that we can look toward the future and see what might be in store that we weren't necessarily aware of at the time. So with that said, the first question here is with the continued planning geared toward transforming this commercial property to one that supports residential uses, would the council be open to the amendments to accommodate that change? Looking for a straw vote for those in favor of opening up the amendments to accommodate this change. Those in favor? It's unanimous for those who are here. And since we did reach if yes to question one, we'll move on to question two and two A. Is a commercial restaurant outlot an important component of the decision? I understand that the developer and the property owner are here. Are they available for conversation to discuss this aspect and discuss how this may impact or not impact them at all? Are they available for that?
They are in the, in the back near the EOC. So we have both Sam Patel and Tom LaSalle, and I was talking to Tom about the outlet concept before the meeting, so he probably has some conversation if you would like me to.
Yes, please. I think it'd be appropriate to hear from them and see what constraints they have or what opportunities exist based on their, their knowledge of this development.
And some, somebody said, you know, the other part of that question that's now come up is, you know, does it matter whether it's an outlot, which I kind of thought it was. You know, putting it inside a building gets too lost and unavailable to the passing public. So I'm interested in. Gentlemen, come on up if you would. Tom, are you going to speak to this? Did you hear the question in the back? Okay. This is Tom LaSalle.
Thank you. Before you proceed with that question, if I could hear from Mr. Patel on the aloft and what, what's in store for the aloft and a restaurant within that facility, if there is one, so we know where to go with the following question about an outlot and opportunities for food and beverage.
Sure. So to that question, we used to have Holiday Inn Full Service Hotel. It had 165-seat restaurant and bar. I would say that almost running 15 years, we see there is little need for a public, you know, requirement for the restaurants. We tried many, many avenues to attract office buildings and general public to the restaurant. Generally, it did not, it was not successful. So I have my doubts about a huge restaurant, but like she mentioned, oh, like what we are doing with Aloft right now is a, is a full-size bar with limited capacity menu restaurant. We cannot even call it restaurant. It's more like a grab-and-go plus comfort food served at the bar, comfort food served at breakfast. And during the whole day, 24 hours, there'll be some sort of food outlet open. Typically, that's what is more popular in hotel millennials and young professionals that would be using the facility. So we do have that additional feature happening. In fact, the Aloft around the, you know, nation has been extremely successful in attracting local, you know, beaten local residents or businesses to this bar that is, you know, dubbed as WXYZ Bar. And the way it is coming along, we feel that, that would provide the need that we look into the hotels and around the area that may need some convenient food outlet or a bar. As far as the development of Aloft goes, I think we are on a pace to have occupancy, I would say inspections beginning of the year and sometime around after occupancy, another month or month and a half with our general manager, D O S, and the rest of the staff onboard and get trained. Another one month, month, one and a half month of that time will get us to the opening date. Could be February or March.
Sure.
That's our expectation at this time.
Thank you for that. So the Aloft is proposed to have a bar with a cafe, light, light food and beverage.
Yes.
And then alcohol for the bar.
In fact, good-sized bar and good-sized cafe. They're kind of separate unit in a big lobby area that's about 9,000 square foot, that includes swimming pool.
And in a boutique hotel like that, it's generally more accommodating for the guests, more so than attracting outside patrons from the community?
So that's, in, in, normally that is true with hotels, but Aloft has kind of beaten the trend and wherever it is in an area like where we are, where we have a little commercial, not little, good commercial development around, like, you know, if it was designed as a downtown loft hotel originally about 15 years ago, that's how the concept came. So the big lobby bar and other things were always used by the local, you know, people also, other than the captive guests. However, in our market, it could change. That's, that's what I thought, but when we spoke to other Alofts that opened in a, not exactly downtown area, but something like where we are, where it is little downtown, away from downtown, it has worked extremely well also. So we expect that there'll be some local patronage that we'll be seeing in this hotel. It is actually, it has a special program to attract local, you know, people. Every week they'll have a, one or two Aloft live programs where local or international musicians will play in this public area, large lobby. And it has been extremely successful at other hotels. So we are hoping that this would be a, this would be slightly more than a normal hotel where the only hotel guest would use this facility.
Thank you. And my apologies, sir. I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry.
My name is Tom LaSalle.
Hi, Mr. LaSalle. So then pivoting to the outlot and the potential for a dining establishment there, what are the impacts to this development or what are the benefits to incorporating an outlot into a dining establishment? And are there any hindrances, as we're already discussing, parking limitations? Would this add an added layer of dynamics to hindering more parking spaces and the overall project?
Well, I guess first I'll address the parking. We, you know, we've come back, we have enough part, we meet the code requirement for parking in the design that, design it. We got comments on the parking in the increased one. The outlet concept, just to kind of, you know, let you know, people think, well, you see two hotels, you see apartment building, that's a market for a, a restaurant. It's not. You know, it won't support a restaurant. But, so what we're willing to look at is the outlet concept, outlot rather, concept opens up the opportunity to maybe, you know, some type of a named restaurant, a franchise, something like that, that has its own identity and attracts more people from the outside. It's a challenge, though, you're right. It increases parking. It's a, will somebody want to do it? You know, the, it, the idea just came up. We're willing to look at it. If, it would be great if it worked, but that's the challenge.
And what do you believe the timeframe for a feasibility study in terms of exploring that outlot opportunity to make the determination if, if it is something that is productive in its exploration or if it, if it wouldn't work based on your feedback? What type of timeframe does that take from your end for us to have an answer here for the council?
Well, the challenge today is nobody wants to build a restaurant. The ones that exist are having trouble surviving. They can't hire help. They're, they're just not working. So, you know, I think it would be more, can we find a way to provide an outlot? And it's just there. I don't think, we're not going to get a restaurant in the near future.
Okay. Please come to the mic, sir.
To answer the question, sir, I think we could conduct a feasibility study within a.
It's going to be negative.
I mean, just to get a, I would say, what you call knowledgeable, I would say, decision-making process, we, we may be able to do that. And timeline could be three to four weeks, I would say. We have done similar studies for the assisted living and other parts, so if it is needed, we may be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you for the information, because I don't, I don't know if that would make us have to take the second question where it asks, is a commercial restaurant outlot an important component of that decision? Or if we should explore an outlot in general, given these nuances with the current climate and restaurant challenges that are here now? So this I'd have to defer back to, to staff from community development and ask the importance of an outlot if it were not to be feasible to be a restaurant. Is there a necessity for an outlot? And if so, what, what would we do to capitalize on that outlot?
So the question is, is, if it's not feasible, would we support the project?
The question is, right now it's listed as a commercial restaurant outlot.
Oh, okay.
Right? A component that, that we as a council should either say yes, proceed with exploring the commercial outlot for restaurants, but given the information that restaurants might be a challenge, do we still, as a council, mandate they explore outlot opportunities of some sort? And if so, then what is the purpose of exploring an outlot at that point?
Yeah. I, I think what I heard from Tom and Sam is it's, they're willing, it might be worthwhile exercise to spend three or four weeks to go through that and, and provide the data, because I think that's part of what makes you make good decisions. If the data comes back and doesn't support it, then we and the council obviously will, will have to consider, does that change your opinion about residential development? So I, you know, maybe that's how to reword that question for now is, you know, we have it worded as a mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
If this is purely a residential development, does that change how you feel?
Well, the first two stories are still going to be commercial and retail. Is that accurate to say the first two or the first story?
The first two stories are parking.
First two stories are parking.
Yeah. And there's some commercial in the front of that, you know, which is a smaller commercial. You know, the idea of a full-size restaurant on the site, you know, I think, I think the question you're asking is, in fairness, is, is it, you know, if we don't do a restaurant, are you not going to improve the project?
Well.
And the answer to that is that you're not, yes, then we probably can't build a project.
Right. Well, and so the, the point of question A beneath line item two is our goal to have a restaurant, to give ambiance and experience to both residents of this development and residents in the greater community. I believe that, that's our objective here for this question, is to explore getting a restaurant outlot so we can give the residents within the community experience. I, I do believe we should absolutely task you guys with a feasibility study and exploring the opportunity and potential for a restaurant or for some sort of experience to give to the residents. But I was under the previous understanding that the first floor did have retail space, and that retail space was approximately 5,000 square foot units already.
That's correct, in the front of the building.
Okay.
Not, not two, two floors, first floor.
Single floor.
Yeah.
First floor in the building has 5,000 square foot units for commerce.
Correct.
And that's going to be the.
And, and you know, the, the thing we really want to be careful of, and you can see examples of it all over the country and cities, is where so much commercial space has been put in buildings and it's just empty because nobody can rent it. And that's damaging to, to the community and to the, to the project. So, you know, I think we have, you know, a reasonable amount of, of, that's rentable now. You know, the idea of a freestanding restaurant would mean we'd have to diminish, diminish some of the size of that. I think it'd be, it would be a trade-off. And then, you know, can you get that, can you get an operator that wants to put something like that in? And will it be successful or do you end up with an empty site? So, you know, I mean, something the city should look at too, is that the best location for a restaurant within the city? That's another question.
Yeah. And we'll have to look to comparables, which is just on the west side of 53, there are a few restaurants.
I mean, we're prepared to, we'll take a look at it. We don't object to looking at it. It would be to our benefit if it worked.
Sure.
And, and it's only to all our mutual benefits if it works.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a true statement. So at this point, I, I think we'll reword this question to asking the council's position on a commercial outlot as an important component and allow these gentlemen to come back with opportunities for that commercial outlot, whether they be restaurant or some other aspect that might be suitable for experience or engagement of outside residents or residents of that development. Those on the council in favor of tasking these gentlemen with exploring opportunities with commercial outlots, please show your, your hand in favor of exploring that. So we've got Alderman, McHale, yes or no?
Well, I'm kind of in between. I, I would like them to explore it, but it's not a showstopper to the project.
So.
Should their feedback come back that it, they find it's not feasible.
Okay. So you're in favor of tasking these gentlemen with the feasibility study?
Analysis.
Thank you. So that's Alderman McHale, Bessesi Reyes, and Sanoyka, who are in favor of that?
I mean, if it works, it's a mutual benefit.
Sure.
If it doesn't work, it's a mutual negative. So...
Yeah. I would be interested in seeing what you gentlemen come up with.
We'll do that.
And then following up to the next question here is, seven stories a concern for height provided all other requirements such as parking can be accommodated? Before we get into that, I want to circle back to the parking conversation and just talk about the fact that we do, we've heard there are limitations to this development. I understand that there are additional opportunities within the current drawings where there's landscaping that could be converted if necessary to add more parking if it was so required. Just fill me in on the current status of the parking.
Well, what we're suggesting now is that we would get up to the point where I can, I'll tell you what we'd have, 212 surface spaces. There'd still be the 100 shared, which he'll get the agreement extended. There'd be 13 new surface and 422 in the ramp, which gives us 747 spaces. The required is 628 spaces. So if you lost the 100, you'd still have, to your point, adequate parking.
And the 100 spaces, are those on the other properties that you own, sir?
It's an easement agreement with office building. They park their cars during 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we, our guests, park on their lot from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Because of their office use and hotel use. So when we are done with this development or during that process, we'll have to negotiate that easement agreement. And they, it has to be to our benefit to continue the regulations because more parking is always better. But at the same time, like Tom mentioned, our own parking within the site would be little over what is required and required. So we'll be good, in a good shape both ways. We would like to negotiate with the neighbors to have that benefit continued by easement parks. In short, the latest plan is addressing this concern very nicely.
But so in lieu or the absence of the agreement being extended, there currently is sufficient parking for this development?
Yeah. We'd have more, little more than is required by the zoning. But it's mutually beneficial to the office and to the hotel to have this. In fact, it might even be more important to them. So the, but we'll get it extended. I think that's the best answer. And you make an excellent point is the future's the future and this way we have enough regardless.
Okay. Alderman Bessesi?
Yes. Question, this is both of staff. Aren't the parking requirements different for residential, whether they're condos or...
No.
Whatever with the number of units versus...
It's per unit.
Right. It's per unit for that. I'm trying to see how we had a problem before.
We have a per unit and then we have a visitor parking requirement for...
Yeah. And you're saying that your numbers add up to what our co-exess.
Remember, before, we had a lot of building coverage. You know, we're building two floors of parking here.
We had some additional parking, I think.
No, but I mean, not, not 422 spaces.
Okay. So that's where, okay, the math wasn't adding up. Now I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So then the next question becomes for council vote about the stories on the facility. Is seven stories a concern for height provided all other requirements such as parking can be accommodated? Like I said, we have buildings in the area, neighbors to this project that are of worth of 10 stories. So I'd like the council to take their temperature on whether or not this seven-story structure is a concern. Those that see it as a concern, please raise your hand. Those who don't see it as a concern, please raise your hand. It's unanimous on not being a concern given the geography and the existing infrastructure around that area. And since we are in agreement that it's not a concern, we can move on to question C, which is, is there consensus that the overall building or footprint coverage should be decreased to provide more room for outdoor space such as green space, parking, and maneuvering? From what we heard, it seems like there is pretty interesting green space, such as the second-story roof where there's outside green space, congregation space. As far as the exterior of the infrastructure and green space, are there any plans available that the council can review or have access to to see what the aesthetic looks like from that perspective or water reclamation as a result?
Well, we brought, we have, I guess, probably it's not fair to say today, yes, you can review it. We brought plans, you know, there, it's a work in progress, but we reduced the footprint. And what we did is we found, you know, in doing market studies, we're finding out that the large, there isn't the demand for the larger park units that everybody thought there would be. People are coming out of COVID, yes, saying they may work at home, but they don't want to spend the money they were spending on many things as we're seeing in the economy. And so in response to that, we've reduced the overall footprint, which then solved many of the site issues that I think staff pointed out. I don't think it's fair to save the opportunity to really review that. But we've improved on it and made that better. We have the large courtyard. I guess to somebody's earlier question too, the roofs on the very top of the roofs, there's no intention of populating those if that was a height question. You know, it's, there's all kinds of code issues about getting on a roof and how you use a roof. So those, there would be no activity on those. So, you know, I guess I think we embrace the idea of trying to get more movement on there and we will, you'll see we've responded to that, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a question for Chief Moxley. In relation to Assistant Director Charlton's comments about access to the property, I understand that Rolling Meadows Fire Station 15 is very close to this property, but in lieu of us coming on to our first anniversary of the condominium fire on the other side of Algonquin, which destroyed that dwelling, it's very important that we have access to all of our multi-dwelling buildings. And so are there any concerns that you have about this current footprint and ensuring that all safety vehicles can arrive at the property?
We did look at this a while back. The internal inside the U shape would be my only point of concern, but we have enough ladders to reach the top. And my assumption is this whole building will be sprinkled completely, fully protected, which is a huge, huge benefit.
That's correct.
So then with regards to paramedics or other life-saving services, then we would just want to also make sure then that there's easy access. So Assistant Director had discussed that there were certain turns and other barriers to getting to this property. Were there any recommendations that you have for the property owner at this point that the council should consider?
No, I believe we had earlier, months ago, and when Scott Moore was here, we did look at initial plans. If, Joellen, is that correct? I remember quite a while ago, we looked at it. We did have some concerns, but they were addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka.
Just a point of clarification, what, one of the things that will happen through the interdepartmental review when we get things settled and why we've tried to widen the driveways, that was one of the very first iterations on the west and the south especially. We wanted to make sure that the trucks could get around that, which they have a little, you know, you look at the motions and they're kind of running into the landscape islands and other things. Want to make sure they can get their outriggers out because, like you said, there's a lot of height, so they need to get those outriggers out to be able to maneuver back there. The other problem area was in that southeast corner where they had the little bump out there. And I believe that modification is also something that was proposed in the revised plans. So we'll take a look at all of that with a fine-tooth comb because that is the number one priority is making sure they can service the building.
Yeah. Thank you. And I understand two wrongs, don't make a right. And when we explored this 120 units here on Kirchhoff, there was an issue at first with space and maneuverability. And they worked through that and I will assume that you gentlemen will work through that. But to the same point in that vein, we should not be taking this situation situationally from one perspective to another. We should look at this and make sure that we allow the same ease and effort to this development as we did the other developments, given their constraints, and make sure that we do honor the safety parameters and make those happen. Alderman Bessesi?
Just want to add one, one other, you know, just advice, just because I was on the planning and zoning for so long. I know they will, when, when this gets, and I'm assuming, I'm hoping it will get to that point where you go back through the planning and zoning committee, they will be asking probably a lot of questions about getting into the complex and getting out of the complex, given the number of residents you may have in the condo slash apartment area. Because traffic does get fairly heavy there and there could be a lot of complaints about not being able to get out of the complex during rush hour.
There were 400 hotel rooms there. The traffic will be lower in this case than was the existing condition there.
The issue between, or the comparison of...
But occupancy, yeah.
Yeah. The hotels come and go at various times, even though the count is higher.
Yeah, the worst times.
Then, you know, people leaving for work and returning home from work all tend to come kind of at the same...
Which is the same for a hotel.
It was actually more so, rather than because we had a large banquet space and meeting rooms at times with over 1,000 people. Yeah. So we have a lot more traffic and parking situation than what this would entail. But to answer any concern, we are going through good analysis on parking as well as traffic analysis and vehicle turn analysis. And that actually resolves most of the, sorry, the current design doesn't really address those top analysis. They are already recording the analysis results. And what you haven't mentioned, we have a kinky building, two trains that creates a very tough maneuvering. But in this plant, we are actually in the middle of that kink on the southeast side. That would easily improve the circulation in this property.
Yeah, we'll get into that at some point. I just wanted to bring it up as something, just to be cognizant of as...
It's always a discussion.
That's all. Because I know you guys from the prior plan.
Yeah.
You guys work very well with staff and with the various committees on their suggestions and their changes and stuff, so.
So this brings us to the final question for council and it's regarding consensus on the overall building's footprint and the coverage being decreased. All those in favor of decreasing the footprint, please raise your hand at this time.
Well, they just there, you did.
Yeah, but we still have a question to see if there's a consensus to decrease it any further. Are you looking for more than what's already...
I didn't get a chance to look how much they did. There, I think the, this has been a good conversation. I think they get a feel of the tenor of your ideas. So I don't know that we need a specific vote on it. So we'll continue to work with them on the type of things, you know, push it as far as we can to achieve what's beneficial for the community and what they can tolerate financially as well and bring back the best plan that we can.
Okay. So at this time, no action to encourage them to decrease it any further by council mandate here at this time? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
You know, one of the things we did try to do is really meet the comprehensive plan in the sense of trying to make this accessible to people who work in Rolling Meadows. So some of the decreased size of units and change in the mix, we think, you know, based on the market studying, we're doing better addresses who would live here, who works in Rolling Meadows, which as we read through is a goal for the community. So that's what we're trying to, trying to do. And thank you for this meeting. We really appreciate this. And we want to partner with you and staff's been very helpful in working with us and, you know, letting us know what to do because it's a much easier process. This should be, this is a long-term partnership, so should not be combat.
Agreed.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Joellen, any further last comments to bookend this subject?
No, thank you. Except you took my report.
Come back.
No, I didn't. Unless if you're good, I'm good.
Okay. Any last comments or questions from council on this? If not, then I think that concludes this subject and I'll just look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman McHale, Alderman Sanoyka for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.